Good evening. Took these off, I can't see the date. It's Monday, August 12, 2020, and it's 7:00 PM. I call the order of the first meeting for the month of October for the Speedway Town Council. I am David Lindsay, President of the Speedway Town Council. I'd like to welcome other members of the council with me this evening. To my left, Councilor Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
To my me— I'm sorry, she's to my right, to your left. To my left is Vice President of the Council, Vince Noblet.
Good evening.
To his left, Councilor Gary Rix.
Good evening.
And to his left, Councilor Gary Pedego.
Good evening.
Also joining us in the audience are our Town Manager, Carlos May, our Clerk Treasurer, Jacob Blaisdell, and our Town Attorney, Bob Clutter. At this ti— our agenda has been posted, which we will follow this evening. The first item on the agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance—
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two in our agenda is approval of the minutes from our September 28 meeting. Those have been distributed to the council. Any corrections? Hearing none, those are presented as approve—or approved as presented. Item three in our agenda is approval of an agreement with Westler for water and wastewater system improvements, asset management plans, and capital improvement plans. And Carlos, I believe, is going to address this this evening.
Yes, thank you, Counselor. So as stated in the agenda, this is a professional services agreement between Westler and the town to look at both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant to accomplish, really, two specific things. One, to develop an asset management plan, and the second is a capital improvements plan. Now, the asset management plan and capital improvement plan kind of go hand in hand. The infrastructure is aging. We need to find out what needs to be fixed and what priority that fix needs to occur. In order to accomplish this with the maximum input, but also potentially the maximum amount of dollars from the state, is to have that asset management program in place. That allows us to go to the state and request money, basically low-interest loans and/or grants, to help with that infrastructure redevelopment. If we do not have this plan in place, the state will summarily dismiss us. So that is the bulk of this. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hear a motion?
Any questions?
Motion.
Motion first.
Move that we approve the agreement as presented by the Town Manager.
I'll second.
Then a motion is second to approve the agreement with Westler this evening. Any questions from the public? Any questions or comments from the council?
Kind of like, is Representative Westler here?
Yes, Representative Westler is here. If you'd like to ask him questions, I'd have him come up to the podium.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Good evening, Jim Kovacs with Westler Engineering.
Hi, Jim. I just—if you could maybe kind of outline some specifics here. We've obviously worked with you over the years in water and wastewater, but whenever we spend a significant amount of money, we like to be sure we here and the public hears what we're talking about.
Certainly. As Carlos just alluded to, the infrastructure in Speedway has been very well maintained by the guys that you have there that operate it, but it is aging. Examples, at the water treatment plant, we know that the wells that you have are your best wells were dug in the 30s, and so they're no longer operating to the efficiency that they once were. Eighteen months ago, we drilled a couple of test wells up in Meadowwood Park and came up with some water up there, but they had—there were going to be some challenges in getting that water suitable to meet your long-term needs. So that began a journey of, do we continue to invest in the existing groundwater plant? Do we make improvements to the surface water plant? Do we keep both plants operational? And through a series of a lot of questions with input from you and input from your operator at the water plant, we started posing some questions back to you. How much do you want to make? I mean, how much—how much do you want to spend to continue to make good water? And the answer is, as much as it's going to take. Well, we want—Wessler believes by taking this project on, we can help you make smart decisions about the future of your water supply. On the other side, with Norm and the facilities at the wastewater treatment plant, we know that you've continued to do well, and you're very infrequently in violation of your NPDES permit, and Norm and his guys do a great job. But to continue to meet those requirements, there's going to be regulation changes that come on. And what we don't want is for Speedway to spend money going down one path, only to realize after you've spent that money that it was not a good path to go down. And so with this capital improvements plan in combination with the asset management plan, we hope to be able to provide you with the best information so that the decisions you make are both prudent from the financial standpoint, but in the long-term needs to meet that Speedway will have. I hope that kind of brings together quickly what we intend to accomplish for you.
You know, in the—in the plan that you presented, you list on there anything—any asset over $5,000, you know, and basically, you know, that you're talking about a whole plant and all the infrastructure associated with getting water to the residents and the businesses in the town of Speedway. How are you going to prioritize, you know, on what goes first? What are you going to work on? You know, what should be, in terms of getting done first in a timely manner?
Well, and tomorrow, I'll be delivering an asset management plan to a client that I have in Bozey County, west of Evansville, and that document's about 1,500 pages long. So it's a whole bunch of information about everything that they have in their utility. But to answer your question, anything that is—anything that's in that $5,000 or more value will be given a ranking, and it's based on its current condition, it's based on its regularity of maintenance, it's based on what the consequence would be to the utility if that particular asset went down. So we end up with then having you being able to make a business case for, hey, we've got to spend money here, and some of these other projects may not get funded because you need to take care of something that's going to have a much bigger risk associated with it if it goes down. So for us, we're looking at your system in its entirety. We're going to be working with Luke and Norm and your guys, basically, to come up with the three facets, and we will handle two of the facets of the asset management plan. We handle the technical and the managerial, and then we'll be working with your rate consultant on that third piece of the amp. As Carlos said, when we go to IFA, if the town elects to go that way, you'll have to have an asset management plan to be eligible to borrow money from the state.
I noticed in the plan that you called for, you know, that we have to hire a financial consultant. Is that in relation to bring all this data together? And, you know, your—the cost is not part of this, it's going to be a separate cost. Are you hiring them, or are we hiring them?
Yes.
Okay.
So the answer is, wherever you're comfortable, it is not a part of what we're looking at in this scope of work. But the—because we can identify exactly what we want out of the hydrogeologic study that we're going to do for the water side, we've got a price built into this for Egan to do—a—to work subconsulting for us. If we knew today that you wanted to work with Baker Tilly as one of the financial consultants that are out there, and you wanted to add to this contract, Baker Tilly can work for us. But recognizing with Jacob's background, with Carlos's background, there's a lot of other financial consultants out there, we didn't try to put the financial piece in as a part of our contract.
Yeah. I guess then the other outsourced would be a hydrologist?
The hydrogeologist, and that's Egan. And yeah, Egan is included in the fee that is included as part of this contract.
And what—I mean, was he the guy that worked on the Meadowwood? Where to drill at in Meadowwood, or is that somebody else?
No, that was with—we worked with Bastin Logan, and Egan worked for you before Westler was involved with your water group years and years ago, and they—there was a study that—Vince, I don't know, it's 20 years old, but Egan has done some work inside of the town of Speedway years ago. And this would be an update, and again, looking at the properties that we believe we can get good water at. We thought adjacent to your well 15, on the ground that's owned by the Indianapolis Levy Authority, we could poke a hole there last year and went through some challenges before we ultimately gave up on that one. If that turns out to be one of the best sites, again, to be able to get good water, we'll go back through the city of Indianapolis to make that a reality.
Okay. Is there any other costs that would be added on to this, other than those consultants that we would have to hire?
No, this has in here—if ultimately you ask us, for example, to supplement with any—to your existing GIS, that could be a supplement, but we'd come back before we did anything saying, here's exactly what we're going to do. But what we're looking at here, this is all-inclusive, for a capital improvement plan and the asset management plan that you'll need to turn in to the state.
Yeah. Just go back for a second. The financial consultant, do you have a rough budget? We talking $10,000, $50,000? How many dollars typically for the financial budget?
The project I'm turning in tomorrow, they were involved early on in the closing of some additional stuff, but it was a $10,000 piece on that, on the one I'm turning in tomorrow. I don't know, and it really depends on what scope you have that you want them involved with.
Did have some conversation with Carlos prior to this meeting. The nitrogen modeling, computer modeling that'll be done, can you talk a little bit about that, just in terms of what's all in that? It's a significant amount of work, correct?
Well, it— And it's a lot more complicated question than you maybe understand. Your existing facility is—has been a very good facility for you, and what we anticipate that when you have your next NPDES, it's probably not going to be in there, but in the NPDES permit renewal that you'll get in 2027, we're expecting that nitrogen removal will be a part of that permit. What we're going to try to do with this capital improvement plan and asset management plan is help you figure out the best way to move this forward so that you don't waste any money between now and then with a plan that will ultimately result in you having to make some changes to your Enoch system to be able to meet the nitrogen that we anticipate. None of us know exactly what that permit's going to say. So to jump ahead today and say you're going to move down into the nitrogen removal before that permit is in hand, we may say you want it green, and EPA and IDIM may say you need it to have—you know, it needs to be purple. So we expect it to go this way, and we're going to be moving you in a direction so you're not wasting any money, but until that permit actually is in your hands, we're just speculating what that permit's going to be.
So the computer modeling itself, you're talking about here, what does that process look like?
So the computer modeling in terms of what the—what—we're going to make some guesses, some scientific guesses about what those permit limits are going to be, and then working with Norm and his guys to make sure that if you're spending a bunch of money on blowers and your electric bill is the highest, you know, part of your utility, that we're not wasting anything by putting in new equipment that could ultimately affect your long-term plan. So in terms of a computer model, Gary, I don't know what Bob and our guys are going to do to be able to help you meet that, other than help you to be moving down a path so that it's—it makes sense for your future.
I get one last question. What was the total cost of this, just for the record?
It's $150,000.
Okay.
That's all I got. Any other questions?
I don't have any for Jim, but I would like to pose a question to Norm if I may.
Sure. Norm?
Speak his language.
Sorry, Norm, but—
Yes, sir.
For the public's benefit, you are the Department Head of Wastewater, have been for a long, long time, and I just want your take on what you're hearing and what you read in this proposal, and do you feel like it's going to fit your short and long-term needs?
Yeah, I believe it will. I would like to expand a little bit on the modeling, just so maybe you might have a little more clear understanding, but what they'll basically be doing is they'll be collecting all the information data that we have generated. So it'll be collecting treatment numbers, how well we're treating, what our loading numbers are, all those kind of things currently. And then also, they'll input into the model what our current processes are. So they'll have a lot of this information that they'll need for the model, they'll be getting from us. So that'll cut down on a lot of those hours. So they'll input all those things into the model, the data, the current data, the loadings, our current processes, whether or not they could or could not treat total nitrogen, which they can't. And they'll input that into the model, and then it'll come out with some suggestions on what type of treatment processes we would need. I also would like to add that whatever—the whatever the process would be for total nitrogen removal would also be the same process we could use for phosphorus removal. So we are currently going to have to meet phosphorus limits by December 1st by chemical treatment. So it's very possible that whatever process we come up for total nitrogen, we would also be able to use for total phosphorus removal, and then that would take—that would eliminate the chemical costs that we currently will have. So that part of the modeling, but yeah, as far as the capital improvement plan and asset management plan, yeah, I think it's a good approach.
Great. Well, I appreciate it, and sorry to put you on the hot seat there.
Not a problem.
No. Thank you, Norm.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement with Westler signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five to zero. Item four through item seven is our ordinances for our budget for the year 2021, and these do have public hearings, so for each one, we'll open for public comment specific to that budget. So first is item four, which is ordinance 1331, which is approval of the 2021 budget for the civil town of Speedway, first reading, and we will open the hearing at 7:18 PM. And Jacob, if you would come and approach and give a brief description of it real quick, and then if anyone from the public has comments, we'll go from there.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. So just a couple of housekeeping items. Just a reminder that we did hold public meetings on August 12th and 13th with all of you, of course, Carlos, the Town Manager, myself, and the department heads, as well as leaders at schools, library, and public transportation. And then also want to note that for this reading, this first reading, notice to taxpayers was provided on October 1st, and we're required to post it 10 days prior to having a hearing, so just want to check those boxes so everyone knows that we have been complying with that process. Speaking to the 2021 budget here, typically in municipal finance, there's complexity around the funds and the different types of funds, and the different revenue streams, and the rules that govern those different revenue streams, but it's kind of offset by consistency around kind of expectations for the revenue and how those revenues will come in. That kind of helps reduce the complexity. Unfortunately, we're living in an environment where we can't count on that anymore, and so it's been a particularly challenging year trying to put a budget together in this environment, and not just trying to look out to 2021, but how's this going to impact 2022, which we know will certainly have an impact, and then years to come potentially. So it's been—it's been a challenge. To date, we haven't had to furlough or lay off employees, we haven't had to cut back on services, we've not had to restrict overtime or go below minimum staffing or anything like that, and given our cash position where we're at, the 2021 budget doesn't contemplate having to do those, making those types of adjustments. However, it does contemplate a certain level of austerity, just given uncertainty in our environment. So most budgets are either flat or slightly reduced that are in this budget in front of you. There is one notable exception for the police department. We do have an increase of a little over 8%. That is to fund the equipment and supplies that our police officers need to do their jobs. As is typical with municipal budgets, a large portion of this budget is dedicated to public safety, in terms of our general fund, which I include the local income tax option with that. 88% of our general fund budget is going to public safety. And then the only other item I would note on it to highlight is that our street department and the road work is funded almost exclusively by gas taxes that we collect from the state, that the state collects at the gas pump and then distributes based on a formula. That got hit very hard, very quickly during the COVID process here, as people started working from home. A lot of people still continue to work from home and just aren't traveling as much, and so we do have a decrease of 24% in the 2021 budget, as we have in years past. We hope to get matching funds from the state, matching grants, and that—that can kind of help, and, you know, we'll certainly be doing projects next year, but we're just trying to cut back and align expenditure expectations with the revenue that we expect to see. I'll take any questions, and then just also wanted to remind you that we're doing this on first reading tonight, just more for the public, but this is a first reading tonight, and that there will be second reading at our next meeting on October 26. That's all I have.
I guess a question I would have, just give a total number for our advertised budget, just so the public can hear that number.
It's about 16.3 million, and that's the amount that the Department of Local Government Finance reviews in our budget. That doesn't include the water wastewater utilities.
And as you said, a large number. Historically, it's 80, 85% of our budget is typically public safety.
Of the general fund budget, yes.
Thank you.
And that's about 12 and a half million.
Thank you.
But, so we need to— Yeah, but at this point, before we hear a motion, we'll open up the—for any public comment, anyone in the audience that wishes to address us, address the council, or Jacob, specifically to ordinance 1331 for the budget for the town. You're welcome to come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll then close the public hearing at 7:23 PM, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve ordinance 1331 as presented by our Clerk Treasurer.
I'll second.
It's been a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1331 this evening on first reading. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance 1331 on first reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five to zero. Item five in our agenda is ordinance 1332, which is approval of the 2021 budget for this school, town of Speedway, on first reading, and this also will be held under public hearing, and we'll be open that public hearing at 7:23 PM. Jacob, would you give a brief kind of description about this, just real quick? I know—it's not you that prepared this, but—
No, just along the same lines, we've had their budget hearings, and their budget was also advertised, they kind of handled doing that on their side, and yeah, I don't really have a synopsis of kind of what their expenditure plans are, but just would note that they've complied with the legal process.
Great. Anyone from the public wishing to speak regarding the school, town of Speedway budget under ordinance 1332? Hearing none, we will then close the public comment at 7:24 PM, and then now entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the ordinance 1332, the 2021 budget for our school, town of Speedway, first reading.
I'll second.
Then a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1332 on first reading this evening. Any questions or comments from the council?
Only that I would point out, I believe that their budget is $25,318,546.
And with that comment, I will also note that at our public hearings that were open to the public, our school superintendent was here and gave in great detail, a very detailed report of their budget and their expenses and such for next year. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance 1332 on first reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This carries five to zero. Ordinance 1333, which will be a public hearing also, which we will open at 7:25 PM, is approval of the 2021 budget for the Speedway Public Library on first reading, and Jacob, I won't have you get up and say anything for this one. The library board presented their budget to us in August as well, which was a public hearing then, and presented that to us, and if anyone from the public has any questions or comments, we have some members from our library here this morning. Darcy, good evening.
Thank you.
Hearing none, we will then close the public hearing at 7:26 PM and entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance slash resolution number 1333 as presented.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1333 on first reading this evening. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance 1333 on first reading this evening signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five to zero. Ordinance 1334 will also be a public hearing, which we will open at 7:26 PM, which is approval of the 2021 budget for the Speedway Public Transportation under first reading. Jacob, I'll save you time again as well. The Transportation Board presented this to the council in August. And anyone from the public wishing to ask questions or comments about the public transportation budget may approach now and ask. Seeing none, we will then close the public comment at 7:27 PM and entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 1334 as submitted.
I'll second. Been a motion and a second and a third to approve ordinance 1334 on first reading this evening. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance 1334 on first reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This carries five to zero.
David, if you don't mind for a moment, I meant to do this earlier.
Sure.
Just—I called out the figures on the other two budgets.
Sure.
So, thank you, President Lindsay. The public library, our Speedway Public Library budget was $1,392,984, and the transportation budget is $366,841. Thank you.
Thank you. And also for the—as Jacob said, we will have our council meeting, we will be meeting in session on October 26 at 7:00 PM for the second reading of each of these as well. Item eight on our agenda is approval of claims and utility adjustments from our Clerk Treasurer. Jacob, we haven't heard from you tonight, so—
All right, back again. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so the claims presented to you cover claims that were made from September 26 through October 2nd, and I'll take any questions, or would appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims as presented by the Clerk Treasurer.
I'll second that.
Then a motion and a second— Been a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented by our clerk treasurer. Any questions from the public? Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the claims as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carries five to zero. Jacob, anything else?
There are no utility adjustments tonight. I do just want to say I appreciate the work and effort of everybody that's been putting in time on the budgets this year. You, council, Carlos, and all the department heads, it's been just across the board, a lot of different, a lot of uncertainty and some adjustments and tweaks, but appreciate everyone's help to get us to this point. And also, schools, library, and transportation, there's a lot of coordination that goes on behind the scenes that I don't think gets mentioned very often, so I appreciate all their help in the process as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Jacob, I'm going to say you, I know you thanked a lot of people, but you do a lot of hard work on that as well, so, thank you. Next, item nine on our agenda is report from our department supervisors, and we will begin with Police Chief Jim Campbell.
Good evening. I'm going to start with the fact that we did have a race a couple of weeks ago, the Harvest GP, Friday and Saturday. You know, it's kind of estimated that there were probably 15,000 Saturday. Speedway sure looks a lot different when it's not 200,000. And we made zero arrests, which again, in law enforcement work, that's, that's good for us. We did have one on Saturday that might be of interest. We apprehended an individual who was passing $20 bills. One of, one of the IMS folks managed to follow him and, and we did make an arrest. And that individual had quite a roll of fake $20 bills that he was even buying tickets. I'm not sure who he was going to sell them to, but I'm assuming he was going to get the money back for a 20 and make his profit that way. So, yeah, he has been incarcerated, but we don't really consider that part of the race issue with fans. We also ran the Metro America, which was Saturday and Sunday of this weekend, and I think the estimate was around 500 fans. So, you know, the credit goes again to our guys who handled all those races. We did have some assistance from Marion County Sheriff's Department, ran some bicycle squads up and down Georgetown and Main Street. Indianapolis Police Department provided some traffic support on 16th Street, so collectively we were successful. I do, I would like to take a minute or two to address, you know, the Old Speedway Neighborhood Association, some individuals there have expressed concerns about, you know, some crime incidents that have occurred in that neighborhood. I think even some of the counselors have heard from some of those neighbors, as have we. You know, but I'd like to address those and, you know, obviously we're concerned about crime in any neighborhood. And even though this is the Old Neighborhood Association, most of this pertains to any neighborhood or any individual. But our basic philosophy is community policing. I think you've heard me say that over a lot of years. And what community policing is, is a partnership between the police and the community. And, you know, the most important part of that is us working with the community to deal with any kind of crime or issues, not only to individuals, but obviously the neighborhood. And I, and I think more than anything, you know, we just want to reassure those neighbors or individuals that we are willing to work with them. They had an uptick in some incidents, there's no questioning that. But honestly, I appreciate the fact that they contacted you and us, you know, to show that they are interested in working with us. And I think that the biggest thing is their support, their cooperation, their information, you know, is critical to us being successful. You know, our detectives have reviewed those incidents, you know, we look for patterns, we look for potential suspects, you know, anything that we can do to help deal with particular incidents, especially when they're repeat incidents. You know, and we've asked our officers to make additional patrols, which we try to do. You know, most of those crimes that occur are crimes of opportunity. You know, when, when you have theft and you have some of those, those are crimes of opportunity. And I, and honestly, they're the hardest probably to deal with. You know, catching individuals that, obviously the cover of darkness and, you know, knowing the neighborhood or knowing what they're after makes it a whole lot harder for us. But again, my assurance is we will work with any individual, we'll work with any association, and we're willing to meet with them, you know, talk about those particular incidents and try to get their support in dealing with it. You know, I, a couple, three things. One is we need people to support, to basically provide us with information when they see suspicious activity. You know, a lot of times we'll get, well, this happened three days ago, or, yeah, I was going to call you, but I didn't. You know, we hear those kind of statements and, and I understand that to a degree, but, you know, that's the only way we can respond. And the sooner we know about it, sooner we're going to be able to deal with it. You know, the other one is when you're involved, when it, when it's vehicles involved, the only thing I can say is take the valuables out of your vehicle. I mean, we take reports on everything from computers to guns, you know, that are left in vehicles and taken out of those vehicles. You know, you can steal a car in about 17 seconds, believe it or not. And, you know, some of those crimes, if it's locked, it's going to be a little harder to steal, but also to take things out of it. There are people, again, that use that as a crime of opportunity. It may seem like small change, but as they go down the street, which they typically do, they're collecting small change from a whole lot of folks. We have made some apprehensions on individuals that do that. And, and those are the things that we can tell people and ask them to help us when that happens. You know, and I guess the other key is just call the police. You know, don't wait two or three days. Call us and let us be aware of it. You know, I think at some point, you know, the bottom line to me is, you know, the Speedway Police Department wants to keep Speedway safe and crime free, but to do that, it's going to take all of us, not just your police department. So I would continue to encourage folks, if, if you have issues, tell us. And just as I said with Old Speedway Neighborhood Association, we will meet with you anytime, anyplace that, you know, that you have an issue that we can help with.
So Chief, can you explain that 311 number to us? So I know a lot of people don't want to call the 911, just thinking it's an emergency and it might not be in this...
The 246-4343 is an administrative number. I'm not, I'm not going to be negative about 311, but when you make a phone call from a cell phone, it's going to hit a tower. That tower may well, or most likely even go downtown, and then they got to transfer it back to us. And again, if you're, if all you've got's a cell phone, then, you know, obviously you're going to maybe try that first, but...
But 911 does that same thing too, right?
Occasionally, that even happens.
Okay.
And, you know, that's just the nature of the beast when it comes to the system we have with towers. But, and eventually it will get back to us. I mean, I don't question that, but, you know, technology's great till it doesn't work.
So the other question that I have for you too, Chief, is crime watch meetings. I know that obviously with COVID, those things are not able to happen at the moment, but is there any way of getting that back on, whether it be, you know, using a school gymnasium or something where people can social distance or doing some kind of Zoom meetings or something?
We, we've talked about the virtual approach to that. Again, I'll be brutally honest, the last one we did, we had six people there. I would encourage, yeah, we'd love to. You know, we'd love to turn people out and respond to their questions there. And, you know, it's just, it's more the opportunity. Recently, we've talked about trying to do a virtual, you know, and a lot of folks just don't do the virtual thing. As soon as time permits, yes, we'll do it, even if there's only six people there. Because it's an effective way, but, you know, I hate to say this, but usually until something happens, we don't get the kind of attendance we'd like to have. You know, that's again why we do things like Citizens Academies and, you know, trying to get people to understand, you know, where we need their help. But yes, I totally agree.
So obviously, and it's important to say, see something, you say something, obviously is only going to help you guys out in that aspect of it, so. And then I think the other thing that's good to mention is that I think we all feel important that the police department is important to our community, and it is, takes the community to obviously help you. But seeing and hearing what Jacob had said in regards to the budget, I think we totally support your department and we want to make sure that our community is safe, so.
And you know, I, we fully appreciate that. I mean, that, especially in this environment, in this day and age, but I think it's been said here before, people live here because of the schools, public safety, right on down the line. And, and so that's what's important to us too, but, you know, we, our job is to help people be safe, and, and we're willing to do that. I'm hoping that's what the message that's coming across.
And then it's always challenging because unemployment's up, crime's up.
And I'm, don't get me into homeless, so you don't have that kind of time, but we're finding a lot of crimes and incidents, again, of petty thefts and incidents where, you know, those kinds of factors are involved. But, you know, again, crimes of opportunity. People that make their living by doing, passing phony $20 bills. So, you know, and that's why I said, it, it takes all of us to deal with it.
Do we have anybody using like the Ring doorbells? Are you, are you connected with that, or?
We did, and there's a program that, you know, we just implemented that you approved. We, we've not collected a lot of folks yet, you know, with that. We do have a lot in town who are using it. Those things are very, they're helpful, without a doubt. The bottom line to it though, if somebody's wearing a mask or a hoodie or it's, you know, it's really hard to identify them specifically. But anytime we can get anything that helps, it's a lead, you know, cars, license plate numbers, anything that, you know, that we can get. But, you know, you even look for times of day, you know, when are these occurring? I was back to talking about patterns. You know, if, if people can tell us when these are occurring, and I don't mean by the exact minute, but if they've got a ring or something, you get a whole lot better idea of what you were dealing with than you would if you didn't have it.
Right.
And we encourage people to do that. I, you know, it does, I think, deter some crimes, but, you know, most of these guys, they're going to wear a mask, they're going to wear a hoodie, they're going to wear, and that, that creates issues in just how good an information is it.
I agree with and appreciate a lot of the comments, in particular that Counselor Fisher raised. In particular, I talked to you several times in the last couple, three weeks, several residents have reached out to me and either by email or by phone, and I've ended up talking to most of them, if, if not all of them. And I think you're right, I think that it is, there are crimes of opportunity. We're all guilty of, of maybe not remembering that we left our computer bag in, in the car, or backpack, or whatever it might be, or in some cases, keys to a vehicle. That pretty much really helps the criminal to, to try and steal a vehicle or two. But I think the crime watch piece, the experiences I've had over the years has been, more than anything, what that does is it gives neighbors an opportunity to meet other neighbors that, we need to get, you know, in, on our front porches, we need to get out and talk to our neighbors, not, not just right next to us, but a few down the street. And when we get to know them, we need to know them well, well enough, we see things that don't look right, because we know what their norm is and they know what our norm is. And I think that's the opportunity with, with crime watch and the successes we've had with, with crime watch in various parts of town, when there've been these, these upticks in particular neighborhoods. Once a criminal finds a little success, it's, it's kind of like business. In business, you find success in a certain market, you go back to that market, and that's unfortunately what criminals are, is they're, they're going to markets where it's been successful for them.
There's, there's an old quote, why do you rob banks? Because that's where the money is.
Yeah. But this is serious stuff, and I, and I know there are a lot of concerned residents, and, and I know you and I are, those are real, those are real similes. And I welcome, as a council, I welcome any resident, whether in this neighborhood or any neighborhood in town, to reach out to me, and I know the other counselors do too. But, you know, we certainly appreciate the work that you and the officers do. You're not always the, catching a lot of praise these days, and we...
I've heard that.
At our last meeting, we approved...
That's a smile, you couldn't see it.
Yeah. At our last meeting, we approved, you know, significant equipment to help you do your job and do it safely, and we appreciate the work you do. And I heard from those residents that called me and emailed me that, that you personally responded, Chief, Assistant Chief responded, Captain Alexander responded, Jason Deardoff responded, and other officers that, that live in the neighborhood or patrol the neighborhood. I mean, they gave specific names. So people are meeting the officers all the way up to, to you, the chief.
Yep.
And I think that's really important, so thank you for that.
You know, one last comment. We get invited to a lot of meetings after there's a problem, and I, and I've always encouraged, I know the Lions Club is good, I've spoke to, you know, a lot of different groups, but anytime that an association, neighborhood, or otherwise needs somebody to come in and talk about safety tips, you know, have a longer conversation than what we're having tonight, I encourage them to do that. You know, because that, that's the only way that, you know, that word really gets around even better than us, you know, talking about it tonight at a council meeting. But, you know, I'll say one more time, that's why we do Citizens Academy. I think that's why we do have the support of the people that live in this town, because I think they know we're trying to do the best job we can. But, you know, this, it's a, it's a different time for everybody, so.
I know it's really difficult right now to have neighborhood crime watch meetings or even a town crime watch meeting. Maybe a suggestion I have in this particular neighborhood that's concerning, and I'm willing to, because I just live down the street here, what I'm willing to do is, is maybe host somewhat of a block, not a party, but a block gathering to where there's folks from, from that area that can come and, and meet other neighbors and, and meet yourself or your staff as part of that crime watch. It'd be outdoors, the weather's cooler, you know, it's inclement, maybe we get rain like we had today for the first time, thank goodness, but, you know...
And we're open, I mean, we go to block parties, we...
Right.
And the thing for me is, I prefer to send the guys they see.
Yeah.
You know, there, there's where the Captain Alexanders and the lieutenants, people that, you know, the patrolmen, they're going to recognize when, when they do call the police. That's who they need to hear from, because that's the guy out there doing the real work. And again, I don't mind, and Vince can tell you, I could talk a long time at a Lions Club meeting, but I think it's more effective in things like that when we can send the patrolmen, you know, that actually do what they do very well. And again, I'm going to compliment, our officers try, you know, and they're going to continue to try, but we've got to have the support of the people that, you know, that, that need our help, so.
I, I've spoken quite a bit, I just want to say one more thing. I know in the neighborhood, there's been some folks that haven't been kind to other neighbors in particular, and that just is appalling to me. And, you know, there's tons of signs around town, around the country. I travel a lot in my business, and it's the just be kind signs. And it wasn't just a sign for no purpose, it's, it's truly meant, be kind. And part of that is being kind to someone else the way that you want them to treat, treat you, is the golden rule, right? And I think that's where we, we really need to come together as a community in neighborhoods to do that.
I'm a pretty kind guy myself.
Yeah, I know you are. Thanks, Chief.
That should make me mad.
But, thank you again.
Chief, I just want to, I feel like everybody's addressed it well, but I, I think it's important to note that we as the council are aware there's some issues. We've got one of the best police departments, I think, in the state, if not, not the country, and it's fantastic that the residents feel that they can reach out to you and reach out to us, so we can have that line of talk between you and the residents. I think that's how things get solved.
Yep.
And I hope those people continue to reach out to Council Rigs, to reach out to the rest of us if there's a concern, to reach out to you, reach, to reach out to us, and that's how things get solved, and kind of be that nosy neighbor if you see something suspicious. Call, that's one of, one of the reasons why we've got a dispatch center right here in town, that you call them, direct at that number that you gave. You are going to talk to someone that knows where something in town is, and I think that's an important point. I guess that's my import, my two cents for the conversation for this evening.
That's it? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Next is our fire chief, and our, our assistant fire chief is with us this evening, Chris Mahorn. Hi, Chief.
Hi, how are you?
Good, sir.
Uh, pretty short for us to this evening. We wrapped up Fire Prevention Week last week. Uh, pretty short for us this evening. We wrapped up Fire Prevention Week last week. It was a lot different look. You know, normally we get in the schools, and with, with the pandemic, it was a lot different. But still successful nonetheless. Cold temperatures are here, you know, today was a little warm, but it's, it's here. So just as a reminder, any, you know, your fire space heaters and that sort of thing, if you have any questions, I won't go into all the specifics of safety tips, you know, here, but if, you know, you can always call our department, we'd be more happy to answer any questions you have, so. And finally, some good news. We applied for a grant through the Indiana Office of Energy Development, and we, we received it. And what we're going to do, excuse me, is we're replacing all the exterior doors at, at Station 88, and a lot of the windows at Station 88 with energy-efficient windows. So we're going to save on utility costs. It's going to help, you know, just make a more comfortable environment for our guys. So, other than that, without any questions, that's all I, all I have.
Great. Thanks, Chief.
All right.
Appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I did have a question. When do you expect to do that work, and is there a contribution on our part? Is it a matching grant?
Uh, it, it, we, we're going to pay $3,000 out of our budget, and we're going to get $37,650. So it was a total of $40,000, $40,650.
Thank you.
So, as far as the win, we just received notification that we were being awarded the grant on Friday. So it's, it's a ways out, you know, once, go through the paperwork. But I would think end of the year, early next year is probably when we'll start, start working on it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our Park and Rec, Parks and Recreations Director, Tammy Smith. Evening, Tammy.
Good evening. The big thing going on in parks right now is the Basketball Rec League signups. And this is our last call for girls. The signups technically ended yesterday, but we have kept it open one more day for our last call, so they have till 9:00 PM tomorrow for third through sixth grade girls that would be interested in participating in the Parks Rec League. The boys' third, fourth grade deadline is Sunday, October 18th, and then the boys' fifth, sixth grade deadline is November 1st. And we are in need of volunteers for the Boys' Fifth Sixth Grade League, and one more volunteer coach for our Girls' League. So hopefully, a parent or someone would be interested in stepping up into that role for us. There has been questions regarding why we do not have first and second graders, a league for them, and historically, we, we haven't, and the main reason is because we do not have access to enough facility time in order to make that happen. We are fortunate to partner with the schools, that the schools allow us to use the elementary schools and the junior high, and the high school to do our leagues. And we have to work around the school's schedule. They, their activities and programs come first, and we just barely have enough space to get the third through sixth graders in. So that's the main reason I wanted everybody to understand that. And then I just wanted to mention that our bathrooms will close at the end of this month. We will winterize them and get them closed by the end of this month. So usually, November 1st is when we close them. I'm not sure what day of the week that is. If that's a Sunday, it may not happen until Monday, the 2nd, but. And then we do not offer shelter reservations between November through March, unless we have a nice warm weather by mid-March. Sometimes we might start those early and open the bathrooms up. But the bathrooms will not open till April 1st. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next is our Public Works Report, and our Wastewater Superintendent, Norm Berry's with us this evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Okay, first I'll start with the Street Department. And Rob reports that he's ongoing, these are ongoing, picking up trash in the common areas, mowing and weeding as needed, as well as dry run diversion, street sweeping. He's currently doing the sewer cleaning in town. He's completed the cleaning on the outside of town, doing sign maintenance, patching of potholes. And he also reports that the 2020 asphalt contractor is working on the punch list items. So apparently, that project's about to complete. Moving on to Luke, the Water Department. He reports that in the last month, they pumped and treated 12 million, 77,000 gallons of water from Little Eagle Creek, and 12,304,000 gallons of water from the ground. They're currently on groundwater right now for the fall/winter months. He reports that with the drought conditions that they've been up against, we have not seen any effect on our wells, which is good news. All of our statistics have come back with normal range. He has two employees that are scheduled to take the WT5 exam, which is a water treatment license required to obtain to be able to operate the surface water plant. The wastewater treatment plant, it's business as usual, have no major issues to report. And for the month of September, we treated and reclaimed 105 million gallons. Finally, I'm happy to announce that the, the town has become a partner in the Clear Choices Clear, or Clean Water Program. Clear Choices Clean Water is a nationally-recognized program that originated right here in Indiana, and it's designed to educate and increase awareness about some of the choices that we make that affect stormwater quality, and ultimately, the water quality of our lakes, rivers, and streams. I would like to encourage everyone to go to the town's website, speedwayin.gov, and click on the Stormwater page, and in the Public Education and Outreach page, you'll find a lot of information on Clear Choices and Clean Water. One of the things that they do monthly, that we do monthly, is there's like a pledge that you, as a citizen or anybody, can go in and pledge to actually, pledge to do something. In other words, like, for September, the pledge subject was trees. So if you would go in and you would pledge to keep your storm drain or front of your house clear of leaves, so that the street doesn't flood, then your name and your pledge will go up on the map. So I would love to see Speedway get all filled up with all these pretty gold placards on there for pledges. You'll find a lot of information on there, and the tools that we can use, and what you can do to do your part for water quality and conservation. It takes all of us to do our part to preserve and protect our environment. It takes all of us. One dramatic illustration that I've always liked to try to use is, whether it's water, wastewater, stormwater, whatever, the next time you take a drink of water, or drink a bottled water, ask yourself if that was your last one. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Thank you, Norm.
Thanks.
Norm, I just want to say thank you for giving a tour the other day. I learned a lot. And I think the public would learn a lot just by understanding the processes that you go through every day to handle, you know, the wastewater coming out of, out on the line. So, thank you.
Hey, Paul, welcome. Enjoy showing you around.
I thank you for that, too. I would just, if a citizen ever wants to see that, I know you occasionally will give a tour, but my suggestion to them is go upwind. Because you tend to trick those that are going on the tour to be downwind.
Correct. I noticed you were struggling with that a little bit, Gary.
Yeah, you noticed that. You guided me right to that spot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly, please, after that. Now, our Communications Director, Kelly Turner.
So I have the most exciting news, which is that we will allow trick-or-treating this year. We've gotten a lot of questions about whether it would be allowed here in Speedway, and based on the recommendations from the City of Indianapolis, while they do suggest that staying home and celebrating with your family is the safest route, they do say that trick-or-treating is safer than having some of the bigger celebrations that you would typically see in Speedway. So the trunk-or-treats and the, the contests, the costume contests that the Lions Club typically puts on, all of those things are canceled for this year. But we are suggesting 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Saturday, October 31st, for trick-or-treat hours, which is our standard trick-or-treat time. The City of Indianapolis and the Marion County Public Health Department have put out recommendations that you wear a mask, obviously, not just a Halloween mask, but a mask that will help prevent the spread of COVID. Sanitize any surfaces frequently. If you have a doorbell that kids are ringing, or handrails up to your porch, whatever it may be, make sure you're washing your hands. If you're someone who is at high risk for exposure, possibly don't turn your light on this year. Just take the opportunity to watch and, and not participate. Or, we are also suggesting Speedway residents consider participating by doing the six-feet trick-or-treat. So that might be creating a candy chute that goes from your porch down to the sidewalk to drop the candy, or there's some other creative ideas online about prepackaged treats that you can set out, and that the kids don't have to come to the door. So we're just asking that, while we do want people to go out and enjoy the holiday, that please make effort to continue to reduce the spread here in Speedway. We've been pretty lucky in the last couple of months, not getting too many cases here, so it would be great to keep that down. Next, we are still looking for guests for the October This is Speedway. So if you haven't tuned in, the last few months, we've had two nonprofit groups come in and talk about their missions here in Speedway. And then the last couple of episodes, we've also had a town employee come in. We had Jacob come in a couple of months ago, and this last month, we had the school corporation come in and talk about their Blue Ribbon Award that they received. So if you have any nonprofit projects you're working on in town, a group that's already been on, that maybe you have a new initiative coming up, please give me a call, or email me at kturner@speedwayin.gov, and we'll get you set up. Likewise, if you have any questions that you want addressed during the episode, let me know as well, and we can get somebody on air to address those questions you might have. And finally, the Speedway Theater Department has asked that I tell everyone that The Legend of Sleepy Hollow will be their play for the year, and that is scheduled for October 30th and 31st, with the 30th being at 7:00 PM, and on Halloween Day at 2:00 PM. It will be a limited in-person viewing, but they've gotten permission from the production company to be able to livestream. So the details aren't totally worked out yet, but it's actually going to be an online ticketed event. And so when that ticketing information is available, I'll share that on the Towns page, and it can also be found on the Speedway Theater Department group on Facebook. So unless you have any other questions, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Next is our Economic Development Director, Tim Gropp.
Good evening, Council. Just a few updates from the economic development side. We're just trying to wrap a few projects up before the, the weather changes here. So Founder Square, we're getting down to the last, the last technicalities there. There should be paving this week, as far as Founder Square Drive. They're working on the swapover of the El Rodeo parking lot, so you see a lot of construction there. And we replaced some pipe along High School Road that needed to replace, that we found as part of this project as well. So we've been able to do some nice upgrades for our infrastructure in that area. All this with the hope that, as the weather turns, we can turn some of these properties over to tenants. So they are working on, we signed some final paperwork as far as the crew car wash, so they'll be taking ownership of their lot within the next week or so. And speaking with MHG Hotels today, their architects are wrapping up designs. They should have full plans by the end of November, ready to go. So things are moving out there. And again, hopefully, we can have a couple other announcements here. Couple of the due diligence periods are wrapping up, actually, this week. So hopefully, soon we'll have some additional announcements.
Tim, can you tell us a little bit about the, the MHG's property, what it's going to be?
Yeah. So the MHG, as far as Founder Square, is around 126-room Hampton Inn that will have an approximately 10,000-square-foot event conference center, if you will, for weddings, meetings, whatever event space you might need. So that, that was one of our big requirements when we started Founder Square. We had just gotten the Courtyard, which was our first hotel back in Speedway since we got rid of all the old motels. And so we really wanted, when we surveyed the public and what we were lacking, you know, we had some, some of our top lists, one of them was meeting space, places where we can have events, places that we can rent out. So that was one of our requirements. We looked out to find a partner who was willing to do so. So we're really excited about that, and it's a fantastic anchor for that project. It really is, is a great transitional piece between the apartments and the, the commercial space that Founder Square ultimately is being. So, again, they're moving right along. Financing is secured for that project, and architectural drawings are just about completed. So we're excited to be done with our part, and then hand it over to the tenants, so we can see some construction next year. So it should be an exciting 2021. Along those same lines, the Tenth and Pocle fencing around the area, the Prax Air area, is getting completed. They were out there working today. There was a rather lengthy delay there with some parts, just due to the design of the fence and having to go over, kind of on a grade. So that is getting completed. We should be done with that in the next week or so. And then that really takes care of our portion, our responsibilities for that project as well. We're, we're anxious to move on from that. As far as Willshaw, so just spoke, again, spoke with MHG today. They had their first official call with Hilton, going through all the details, and they said that went very well, and that Hilton is excited about their partnership in this project, and they have a good path forward. They're expecting some bids back on some of the packages at the end of next week, as they're tightening up the budget for the project moving forward. And they're currently working on securing financing. There's a couple of different avenues with the partnership there. So they're exploring different avenues of whether, whether it moves forward with financing from Loftus Robinson or through MHG directly, and also who's backing that financing. So they're working through that. They did not, they seem confident that that'll get secured here in the, in the coming weeks. And from that point, I did ask them, they had some pricing on doing a wrap around the site. So we, again, requested that they clean up the site for the wintertime. We don't anticipate construction starting till spring, as they work through some of the redesign and whatnot, but they're going to work on cleaning up that site and possibly putting a wrap around there, so we can see something besides steel just laying there as well. And they also mentioned that they're having almost daily conversations with Wilhelm coordinating that as well. So hopefully, we'll have an updated construction schedule for you shortly. So all positive coming out of there from a long delay in that project.
Tim, I think it's important to, to mention that MHG owns the courtyard developing the Hampton Inn, and now the Tapestry. It's a Hilton product. They're a great partner. The success they've had, even in spite of COVID, has been great. So we're excited to have them as, as a partner in the town. Having three hotels will allow them to, to bring smaller conventions and, and meetings where they can, where we previously couldn't house any of those.
Yeah, and absolutely. And one thing that, in the design, just for space constraints, the Willshaw doesn't have a lot of meeting space, but they're able to block rooms at the Willshaw, but utilize the space out at Founder Square. So there's definitely advantages to having them so invested in the community and having multiple properties, especially having the two Hilton properties. And we appreciate their investment. They believe strongly in Speedway, and, and they're excited to be investing here. We're happy that they're a partner, and we have full faith that they'll be able to complete these projects and
Thank you.
On time, and, well, on our new time. But to the ending line. So everything seems to be moving well. I'm checking in with them at least weekly to make sure we have updates, and I'll keep you posted as I have more information. And some are trying to beat the clock at this point. You know, the weather can turn quickly, but if you go past Town Hall, the new Town Hall Police Station, you're going to see a lot of exterior work in full force. They were taking the stone off of the building today. You're going to see bricks delivered here shortly. They're working on repaving some of the lots. They'll be digging those up, adding the They'll be digging those up, adding the light poles on the exterior. There's some new fencing that's going to be going up and trying to get that done. They're a little behind, frankly, on the exterior work, but not that we're concerned about. It's just a kind of a weather game at that point. So you're going to see a lot of people on site. You're going to see a pretty big transformation here in the fall, in the next month on that exterior. It's going to look a lot different. I think you're going to really like what it looks like when it's done. Everything else, interior seems to be going pretty smooth. They're working on putting in the drop ceiling. They're working on some of the finishes with electrical, whatnot. And as soon as that's all completed, they'll shift to flooring and some of the finishes from there. We still anticipate an early January transfer over to the town that we can get in then and coordinate furniture moves and working out the logistics, getting everything in. So there were calls today on technology. We've started that process. You had approved contract for IT. All that is in process. So we're down to getting a lot of the finishing touches and details that we need to work out on the town side logistics-wise. So we're excited, but everything seems to be going pretty smooth. We just need them to, we need the weather to hold out a little bit longer so we can get these exterior portions done. Beyond that, 1330, the former Bell Building, that is in process to be demolished in anticipation of 1300-block project. We're working on those details behind the scenes. We're going to allow the fire to utilize that property for training. We always like to do that if we have a building that is going to be demolished. And I know they appreciate the opportunity as well. So that's always a great partnership and we like working with them. And then one last positive announcement, we had a nice ribbon cutting last week with Able Motorsports, Able Construction to welcome them to the community. They had a lot of their staff come out from Louisville and different areas. They're very excited to be in this community and it was a real nice event. And we welcome them to the community. We can't wait to see additional tenants in that building, but that building turned out fantastic. And that's all I have.
I want to thank you and the S R C for allowing Noble to sell art pieces that the kids, challenged individuals made. It was a big success for them, seeing that, you know, the fruit of their hard work and was able to raise some money for those individuals. And thank you for that. It was a beautiful day and on Saturday and it was very successful on that end.
Yeah, we did receive a message from Amy Carroll and it sounded like everything went very well. She had asked on behalf of the nonprofit to use one of our lots on Main and we're always happy to accommodate those requests if possible.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Item 10 on our agenda is a report from our town manager, Carlos May.
Thank you, councilors. Well, as you heard from all the department heads, you got most of the specifics from them, so I'll take a more general overview. Obviously, we're going through the budget season. A lot of other municipalities have had to furlough workers, cut workers. We, due to your fiscal management, clerk treasure, we've been able to not have to do that. So in that regard, we're really moving ahead and going forward. But then when you add on all the economic development that you just heard about, we have weathered COVID well. It's still affected us, obviously. But the fact that we were able to maintain an even budget while still increasing police to make sure that our community is safe, I think that's just a testament to the ability of all the department heads and employees to keep chucking along, keep making sure the work is being done without really having to have huge impacts to the community well-being and to the services that we provide the community. So in that regard, I just have to say thanks to them and thanks to you for doing a good job on that. As you heard Tim say, we're definitely moving forward. New Town Hall, the Willshaw Hotel, Founder Square, all of these things progressing and continuing to move forward, even with the COVID impact, even with the budgetary impacts, is a phenomenal thing and testament to the community as well. You know, when the governor had the moratorium on paying the bills and not being able to do disconnects, the folks of Speedway really came through. They didn't take advantage of the situation. They kept paying their bills and obviously that helps the town continue its services. So in that regard, I really have to thank the citizens of Speedway for pulling together and not just in that aspect, but for helping out the local businesses. A lot of other small business owners, especially downtown Indianapolis, have been more than unduly impacted to the point where they're shutting down. Luckily, here in Speedway, we've stuck together. We've come together and we've helped those businesses. So overall, as far as the difficulties confronting us, I have to say Speedway has weathered them very well and we're continuing to move forward. So I'm just pleased to be a part of it. And other than that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Carlos.
All right. Thank you, councilors.
Our next item is a report from our council members. We will begin with Councilor Eileen Fisher.
So I want to definitely thank our department heads in regards to our budget, putting things together, as well as our different committees, you know, the library, transportation. But one of the big people, I think, that really has helped us this year and all the 13 years I've been on council, I've seen a big difference and that's Jacob and your position and your knowledge. So thank you for everything that you brought to the table in regards to that aspect of it. I think that the next couple of years are going to be some challenges and that will be the interesting part, to see how we all react to that and do our part in that aspect. The only thing I have is I just want to do a shout-out to our girls' soccer team. They did a great job this year. They did have a regionals game this past Saturday and they did not win, but they lost in a shootout, five to four. But they beat some teams this year that they've not ever beat before. So I just want to, you know, say a great job to our girls' soccer team. They played really hard this year. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Next is Councilor Gary Pedego.
Well, I would like to echo Councilor Fisher's comments regarding our department heads. Although I've been on the council for just a few short months, I'm continually impressed on an ongoing basis with how much knowledge that each one of our department heads have about what goes on and their, within their realm of responsibility. And as Carlos mentioned, I mean, we just continue to keep moving right along in spite of COVID. So the tour that a couple of us went on at Water and Wastewater a couple of months back was very impressive. I learned a lot and I would encourage all the citizens here in town, if you ever get that opportunity or can find time to, to take that opportunity to tour those facilities, reach out to Luke and Norm and I'm sure they can make that happen. You'll learn a lot as well. Three weeks from tomorrow, folks, is Election Day, November 3. Early voting started here a few days ago. And if you, if you're still interested in voting absentee, then you have until the 22nd, I think midnight, to get your request for that ballot. You can take it downtown or you can mail it, but they have to have it by the 22nd. Early voting also comes to the West Side at the Cranert Community Center as of October 24th. So I'm hearing long lines downtown and I think that's a, that's a good thing. But for many of us, we don't want to go downtown and stand in long lines. So, you know, Cranert might be our next best option and I think they, their early voting continues on through like November 2nd, or 1st or 2nd. So beyond that, I'll say what I said last month and again, echo something that Carlos mentioned just a little while ago. Continue to shop in Speedway and buy in Speedway. And it just benefits all of us, so.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Gary Raikes.
Thanks, President Lindsey. First, I wanted to give my, my email address and my phone number for any citizen that wants to contact me directly. I've had several that have here in the last few weeks with some of the issues, concerns they've had, particularly in the old neighborhood. My email address is, like my name, it's G R A I K E S and it's at speedwayin.gov. And my cell phone number is 317-752-5151. Those are on the town website and I encourage you to contact me anytime, preferably not between midnight and 6:00. But if you need, I'd take the call then, too. Second, I want to just echo Eileen and Gary's, and others, David's thoughts earlier. We, in my years on the council, this was probably one of the most, if not the most difficult budget and we continue to scrutinize it because we're hit with a once-in-a-hundred-year pandemic or epidemic that is, is going to challenge us next year, the following year, and the following, and the year after that. And the planning we do now, where we find little savings here or there, will really help us in years to come and at the same time, trying to find revenue. And I applaud the Fire Department for finding monies through, through grants and they've won a few of those. So we've spent a lot of time, and will continue to spend a lot of time, talking about taxpayer money and other, other money that comes to the town. And thirdly, our, a new counselor is born and raised in Shelby County, originally as a farmer. And if he didn't know it, today is National Farmer's Day and I'd like to, he, Gary, you know, kidding, went to Purdue and studied ag science. I don't know that you spent a lot of time in that field in your career, but he wears a John Deere hat all the time and I wanted to encourage him today on National Farmer's Day.
Well, thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Next is our Vice President of our Council, Vince Noblet.
Thank you, President. I just want to shout out to all the public safety and all of Towns employees. This council really appreciates the hard work that you do and a lot of times, you guys don't get recognized. And it becomes very evident when you start touring a lot of the departments and you see the hard work that goes on and it's really not noticed. But I think it's well said that, you know, that this council does notice. And we see a lot of hard work going on in all departments. And a lot of times, it's hard to really fully recognize them publicly, but I want to take this opportunity, especially a bunch of time and the difficult things that, choices that we have to make moving forward into 2021. I also, I just want to, you know, this is subtle, but you know, we just finished two races and it just, you know, you don't realize how much you miss something like that until you can see and hear everything going on over there. And I want to applaud the I M S for the way that they're taking care of their grounds and the pride that they take. I can't remember that they left the flags up around the whole facility and what that does, even down 30th Street and Georgetown Road and 16th Street. It really dresses the town up. And, and I think it makes everyone feel, you know, that they take a lot of pride in being part of Speedway when they can see a facility with, you know, the grass cut and everything manicured. And the good job that, you know, our street department does down Carrefour's Old Road and, you know, that we got people out picking up trash. Indianapolis wishes that they could be like us, you know? And every time that, when it snows and it's going to be that season again, again, they just wish that they could drive on streets that Indianapolis had like Speedway has from that standpoint. But I appreciate all those citizens out there. And I also want to make sure that we need to build an alliance with the police department through this Crime Watch program. I think it's been one of those things, out of sight, out of mind, and I would love to see that grow so that we can keep Speedway safe all the time and help our police department out as much as the chief said. That's all I got, David.
Great. Thank you. And the final item is my report. One thing I'd like to make a comment on is I know there were, obviously, residents have voiced concerns about the issues in the old Speedway Neighborhood Association. And some stated that they were going to come to the meeting. Just, just a reminder that we welcome public comments at our meetings, but you need to contact one of the councilors to do that. At the top of our agenda, it says to make a public comment or ask a question about one of the agenda items, please email Town Council President me. David Lindsey gives my, my address to send that email to at least two hours prior to the meeting. You also can contact your council representative for your area. If you would like to address the council, please contact me. My cell phone number is as well as on, is on the town website. And I again would like to echo, I know we talk about budget, but tonight was just one step of many in this process. It starts back in beginning of June, I think, when Jacob says we've got to start thinking about it. And then we set dates up for the public hearings and I appreciate his hard work this year and Carlos, your input, and especially our department supervisors. I, I feel that we're financially sound now, but what concerns me is the next few years because this is going to be a ripple effect that's going to, going to affect us. And we're looking at that and we're working towards being prepared for that. So I appreciate the hard work from everyone involved in that. It's not a, if it, tonight was just not a meeting where we, where we approve something and move on. This has been a long process and I appreciate all the hard work with that. So with that being said, a reminder that we will have our meeting on August, or August.
I wish.
You're, you're over here talking snow. It threw me off. Our next meeting will be October 26th at 7:00 p.m. And we appreciate everyone's input tonight. Thank you. And we adjourn the meeting at 8:25.
We're getting overtime.